Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to wait a few more minutes. We have a couple colleagues that should be on their way and then we'll begin our Recreation and Human Services Committee. Thank you. Just a quick update, Council Vice President is on the way and then we'll begin the committee.
While we wait for a quote, I would just point out the, what do we call it, the R guide? Is that its name? This is a remarkable piece of literature. Anyone go through it? I'm only upset that there's not enough for three-year-olds, but next year my kid will be able to enroll in a lot of this stuff. Commissioner Green, do you have stacks for everybody in person?
Aye.
Great. The council office, we should do everything we can to help get this out there. It's really remarkable stuff. I'm looking forward, Commissioner Green in particular, to the otter walk in Genesee Valley Park. Thursday, July 27th at 6:00 PM. I'll be there. I don't know, we have otters here. Did you? Yeah. I'm not an aquatic kind of guy.
At this time, I'd like to call the Recreation and Human Services Committee to order and ask the clerk to call the role.
Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Lightfoot, Councilmember Martin, Vice President Lupien, President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmembers Harris and Councilmember Lightfoot are both excused from today's meeting under the weather a little bit. And I just wanted to acknowledge that they weren't able to join us today. So we'll lead right into, I'm going to get us right back on track in terms of timing and lead us into introductory number 238. Authorizing funding and agreements for the 2023 Summer Food Service Program. There are two disclosures from Councilmember Harris and Vice President Lupien are both employees of the Rochester City School District and are required to disclose this information but may participate in the discussion and the vote. So any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I need a motion in a second.
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. Now we vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 262 is authorizing agreements for youth summer growth and development. We do have an amendment for this item that I'd like to make a motion to amend introductory number 262 to include the additional language in section one as provided. So can I get a motion to amend the item?
Motion to amend.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of amending the item, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now let's vote on introductory number 262 as amended. I'll take a motion in a second.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor of introductory number 262 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That is a record committee meeting. With no further business before the Recreation and Human Services Committee, we stand adjourned. We will convene at four o'clock for the Public Safety Committee. Thanks.
[inaudible]
All right, at this time, I'd like to call the Public Safety Meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the rule.
President Melendez.
Here.
Vice President Lupien. Councilmember Gruber. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Lightfoot. Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson. Councilmember Pio.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, well, this month, we have no legislative items in the Public Safety Committee. So I want to acknowledge a few things, and then we do have a presentation. So June is Gun Violence Awareness Month. To each of my colleagues on council, everyone should be receiving from the Office of Violence Prevention, a gun violence awareness shirt, an orange shirt. It's in your mailboxes or will be here by tomorrow. And I'm going to ask my colleagues if they're willing to wear that shirt at the June council meeting on June 20th. In addition to that, I do want to highlight that there's two upcoming events. One, on Monday, June 12th. And here in these chambers at six o'clock will be the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition Meeting, led by Councilmember Willie Lightfoot. And then the following day, Councilmember Lightfoot will be hosting a statewide summit with faith leaders on gun violence. So that information has been disseminated to council, and we'll make sure that it is up on our social media page. One final announcement related to council items is Councilmember Harris has worked with the administration to introduce Report It, which is a mobile app that is available now to report anonymously any issues or concerns in the community related to public safety. So that app is available at reportit.com. And I believe there's also information on the City of Rochester website and social media. So with that, I'm going to invite Deb from Moms Demand Action to join us at the podium and provide us with a presentation today. I think the microphone may not be on, sorry.
It's a button right on top. No, right on top of the mic.
We got you. Sounds like it's on.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity. Everytown for Gun Safety is this country's largest family of gun violence prevention organizations, with nearly 10 million supporters, including moms and grandmothers like us, mayors, students, faith leaders, educators, and even gun owners. We are focused on fighting for gun safety policies from city councils to Congress. We work to beat back the agendas of the gun lobby, the gun industry, and far-right extremists. We are committed to fostering a culture of responsible gun ownership, which is why we advocate for secure firearm storage. When a child shoots someone, it's not an accident. It's an unintentional shooting and a preventable tragedy. We know that 4.6 million children live in a home with at least one loaded and unlocked gun. That firearm can be found by a child who wounds or kills themselves or another child, or it can be stolen and used to commit a crime. Secure storage can prevent both. Volunteer leader Dr. Melissa Hensley will now share with you her important Be Smart outreach to medical residents and others. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Dr. Melissa Hensley. I'm a resident physician in preventive medicine at the U of R. I got involved in gun violence prevention because it's really a public health issue. It's an epidemic in our country, unfortunately. It affects everyone, and there's unintentional injuries, there's suicides, and there's homicides. And there's different approaches to preventing all of those. And one of the most important things that I talk about is safe storage. And Deb mentioned that. And one of the reasons that it is so great is that it's not political. It's something that we can all agree on, that, you know, guns should be kept out of the hands of children and people who shouldn't have them. And there's something that we can all do. And so I started talking to internal medicine residents and giving talks about how to talk to patients, how to talk to families about firearms and safe storage. And just some of the statistics, like having a gun in the home triples your risk of death by suicide, just having a gun in the home. And a lot of them didn't even realize, you know, some of these numbers and that we can actually have an impact. And there's been studies that have shown that physicians talking to their patients can actually change behaviors. So that's one of the things that I've been working on, is encouraging physicians to talk to family members, also extremist protection orders. And what our next goal is, is going into some of the schools. There's been some work in some groups that sort of focus on kids and talking to kids about, you know, stay away from guns. Guns are bad, sort of like the DARE approach. But what's been found to be more effective is our approach, which is the Safe Storage Initiative, and really puts the onus on adults to keep kids safe from guns. You know, keeping them locked, unloaded, and out of reach. Because a lot of kids, most kids who live in a home with a gun, they know where the gun is. And a lot of the time, they've actually handled the gun, and their parents have no idea or think, oh, my kid wouldn't do that. And unfortunately, they are getting a hold of these guns. And we all feel a little bit helpless sometimes when we hear about school shootings or mass shootings. And, you know, what can we do? And I think that this is something that we can sort of rally around and be like, you know what, we can talk about guns. We can say, are there guns in your home? You know, how are they locked up? A conversation just like you would have if your kid goes over to somebody's house and there's a swimming pool, or there's an allergy, or there's a dog, that's saying, you know, my kid's really curious, he gets into things. Are there any guns in the home? And just sort of normalizing a conversation. And so we're really trying to get into the schools, maybe to be able to talk to parents, to sort of just get everybody on board with, you know, something that we can do to feel a little bit less helpless. So.
Great, so I'll entertain questions from my colleagues, but I want to take a point of privilege to ask one question. In terms of legislative action that cities can take, could you maybe give a sense of what other cities, or you don't have to have the answer today either, I mean, you could follow up with us, what other cities are doing with respect to either safety, safe storage type things, or any other legislative action cities can take? Because the majority of these legislative items that I've researched and understood are either federal or state laws that are targeted to be changed.
I'm not sure about legislation, but one of the things that we wanted to talk about was getting the schools to adopt a safe storage pledge. And a lot of schools have done this around the country, we know downstate, you were saying.
Westchester County.
Westchester County has done this, that they send a form home with all of the kids at the school that describes safe storage. And getting the parents to agree to it and sign it and send it back and to, you know, commit to that.
Just thinking, this is probably something that we can do in our recreation centers.
Certainly something that we can talk to the administration about, you know, sharing this type of information at rec centers and other locations within the purview of the city. Any questions? Councilmember Pio.
Are we talking about asking kids to tell us if their parents own guns?
No, no, absolutely not. It doesn't matter if people own guns or they don't own guns. It's basically just a commitment to keep kids safe from guns. So there wouldn't be any asking or anything, it would be a form that just goes to the parents, you know. I don't, guns are everywhere, you know, 30 to 40% of households in the United States have at least one firearm. And our approach is, that's fine, you know, you can have your guns, but they need to be safely secured. So it's not, it's not sort of an accusatory thing, and that's, that's really what Be Smart is. It's supposed to bring everyone together to figure out how to keep kids and people who shouldn't have guns safer. So it's absolutely not, do your parents have guns, or where are the guns? But like, okay, so how are your guns stored? You know, that, and even, you know, I've, talking to the residents and things, it's like, maybe a better way to say is not, do you have guns? But if you have guns, are they locked up properly? You know, just assume everyone has a gun at home, and then that's fine, we're not judging you. How are they secured? Can we talk about that? You know, like, do you know that kids often get access to their parents' weapons and they don't know about it? So it's not, it's not like a are there, aren't there? It's there are, we know there are. And so what can we do to keep kids and people who might have mental illness, or people who are, you know, battling substance use, things like that? How can we protect these people better?
So one of the statistics you stated was a house with a gun in it is three times more likely to commit suicide?
They are three times more likely to die of suicide. And the reason for that.
Is that causation, or is that?
It's a statistic. So the reason is that about 90% of suicide attempts that involve a firearm result in death. Whereas other means are much less lethal. I mean, most ingestions, self-harm, like cutting behaviors like that do not result in death. But if there's a firearm, you're 90, you won't get a chance tomorrow. Which is really unfortunate, because most people who survive a suicide attempt, they don't attempt again. About 75% of people who survive a suicide attempt will go on to live a life, and they won't attempt again. But unfortunately, if it's with a firearm, they won't have that chance. So that's why you're three times more likely. The other issue is, and especially with kids and adolescents and teens, the presence of a firearm can actually increase thoughts and behaviors of suicidality. Not as much in adults, but we see that in kids.
Councilmember Pio, you have another question there before I turn it over to Councilmember Patterson?
Yes, you two are the spokespeople for Smart?
No, we're volunteers with Moms Demand Action.
Moms Demand Action, okay. You're, I'm going to assume you're both gun owners, legal gun owners.
No, we're not, I am not personally.
Okay.
No, I don't.
Thank you.
We do have many gun owners who volunteer for the SARM group, however.
Yeah, and that's fine, it is absolutely fine. We know the guns are there, and, you know, it's just like, we all drive cars, but we follow the speed limit. We wear our seat belts, we don't drive drunk. You know, there are cars, there are guns, but there are ways to make these things safer. And this is one of the reasons that we're really trying to approach this from a public health perspective, is that we've done such a great job with motor vehicle collisions, and that's one of the, which is kind of sad, that now the leading cause of death in those under the age of 19 is guns. It used to be accidents, like motor vehicle accidents. And, well, more people are dying from guns, but also we've done so much work to make cars safer because of safe roadways, because of traffic signs and, you know, safe roads and all the laws. You have to have a permit to drive, you have to take a test, you have to have insurance. And so we're sort of trying to take that same approach with firearm safety. We can make guns safer. Do you know that a three-year-old has the strength to pull a trigger? Why? Like, why is it so easy to pull a trigger? So there's a lot of things that we can approach guns, there can be, we can make the guns safer, we can make laws to make it safer. But all that we're really targeting here is just lock them up. Just keep them away from people who shouldn't have them. Keep them, you know, unloaded, locked, where kids can't get them.
Councilmember Patterson.
Amen and absolutely. Can you share with us the pledge that you would be interested in sending out into the community to the families? Because I get what you're saying. It's not a matter of, hey, do you have a gun? That's not the question.
Yeah, no.
The issue is, if you have a gun, or not even if, do you pledge that to those three points you made? If you have, if you have a gun in your, firearm in your home, do you pledge to keep it unlocked? Do you pledge to keep it secured? And what was the last one? Unlock, secure, and what was the other one? Oh, sorry, locked, I do mean.
Locked and unloaded.
Locked and unloaded, wasn't another one?
Just safely stored away from anyone who shouldn't have access to it.
Okay, so that's it in a nutshell, those are the three points, bang, bang.
Exactly.
Didn't mean bang, didn't mean bang.
Yeah, bang, bang, exactly.
But those are the three points, no bang. But the three points are secured, locked, and safely stored. And that's, and you would be, and you would, in an ideal world, you'd send that out to every school. And do you really even need to collect it, or is it just kind of like, maybe this is an information thing?
Yeah, probably. Yeah, but I mean, I would like to do some kinds of, you know, presentations and talks and stuff like that, too. Not just send it out, but actually, you know, talk about it. Because a lot of people do get the wrong idea. They think, you know, you're coming at me because I own a gun. And that's absolutely not what this is. I just, we're just trying to make the situation safer, you know, just like cars. It's really just like cars.
So would this be like something that you would be interested in maybe having in something like our recreation guidebook? Or any communication that the City of Rochester was doing to our constituents? We just kind of put it in there like we put in the leaf collection schedule? If you got a gun, keep it unloaded, keep it secured, keep it locked, keep it secured.
And it's also promoting having that conversation with other people. Because especially if you don't have a gun, you know, just if you know somebody does, or, oh, hey, you know, how are you storing your gun? And one of the ways that we approach talking to patients is especially if there's a change in the home, like you have a baby, or you have a newly mobile toddler, or you have an adolescent, or a teenager, or someone who's struggling with mental illness or substance use disorder. Having those conversations, you know, that maybe you should even have the gun removed from the home temporarily. You know, and that's, that's sort of a conversation that you have to have with the individual. But at least, you know, locking it up for whatever reason. And the other thing is that a lot of guns are stolen. You know, especially Monroe County, we have a ton of guns that are stolen. About half of them are stolen from vehicles. And in New York State, you are required to lock up a gun in a vehicle, but a lot of people don't. And then you don't know what's going to happen with that gun. And a lot of people like to say that it's a stolen gun, it's illegal guns. And it's like, well, what are you doing to prevent your gun from being stolen? Are you locking it up? Are you secretly storing it? Because if you're not, then that gun can become anyone's gun.
And I apologize for this for being late, but are you working, or are you working with the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition? It's led by Councilmember Lightfoot?
We do.
We do.
We've been attending their forums for a number of years now.
Okay, cool, all right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If I could give you this, this is something, if you're interested, it's a laminated poster, if you would want to hang something like that at the rec centers or elsewhere.
Yes, we'd be happy to share with the administration.
Absolutely.
And in terms of getting the letter, I believe the DA in Westchester County was very instrumental in getting this letter in every backpack to go home.
Okay.
I have access to that letter, I believe, I'll be happy to share it with you, sort of as a template, perhaps.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
No, I want to say I don't disagree with what you're doing either. I agree that they should be locked up. The only problem is, we're facing a city where people are, I have a neighbor who was broken into their house while she was sleeping, and the criminal was on top of her. So her gun was locked away.
So there actually are gun storage devices that are opened by a fingerprint.
Very expensive.
Which would, you can win for like 40 bucks. Guns are very expensive. How much is a gun?
I wouldn't buy that $40 one.
But how much is a gun?
My guns are expensive.
So I hope that your storage devices are expensive, too. Right?
I'm not answering that.
Well.
Okay.
We could also, we could also look for funding for things of that nature. There are many, many grants available. I could hook you up with someone at Everytown for Gun Safety tomorrow.
That'd be excellent. If I can provide that to my district, that'd be amazing. I'm totally behind that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Please know that Moms Demand Action is a nonpartisan group. And also, as I mentioned before, we do invite gun owners to join us in this, in the separate.
Like, it's like cars, you know, we really, that's the analogy that I like to use the most, that they're. We really, that's the analogy that I like to use the most, that they're there, we know they're there, we just have to make it safer.
Council Vice President?
Uh, yeah, it was gonna be more of where I was gonna ask is around the storage and what options there are, and how to get access for people to be able to, uh, to more easily afford it.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of free options that you can get. A lot of the time when you, when you buy a firearm, they give you one of these cable locks, which actually aren't really the best thing, especially if you have teens or older kids in the house, and they can sort of dismantle them. Um, but you can buy them anywhere, from the gun shop, from Amazon. There's some cheap ones, there's some expensive ones. And it's sort of, tailor that conversation to what you're, what do you own? You know, if it's somebody who's a collector, who has like a whole bunch of, uh, you know, they collect Civil War rifles, or, I don't know. Then they need like a big storage thing, and then there's, there's smaller ones. And like I said, there are ones that you can open with a fingerprint. And you can access it just as fast as you could, you know, open your bedside drawer and take it out from there. That's where you keep your gun.
Yeah.
Um, there's a wide range. And that's, in the presentation that I do, and the presentation that's for, with Be Smart, it has a nice, a couple slides showing pictures. And like, the residents found that really helpful, because a lot of them are not gun owners and had, you know, I had no idea. I'm not a gun owner. So learning about what does safe storage even mean? What does a gun lock box look like? What is a cable lock? What is a trigger lock? And it sort of goes through that and has some prices of things like that.
Yeah, and it's certainly free to store your ammunition separately than your gun.
Yeah.
To have it unloaded.
Absolutely.
Um, but I just wanted to underscore, um, I, you know, I, I teach. And so I had a sixth grader just last weekend recount a situation in his neighborhood. And he said, yeah, well, I know, I can go get a gun. My dad has it in his bookbag, and he, he always believes me. And so if I tell him I don't have it, then he'll believe me. And it's just so, so easy.
Yeah.
And it's so easily prevented. So I really appreciate that you are, are here and, you know, that we can be a part of this effort.
To your first question, often, uh, law enforcement departments will have access to free cable locks. And as Melissa said, that, that is the least effective, but it is at least something.
Yeah, and anything that sort of puts time between somebody and using a gun is, is a positive. Especially in, in terms of suicide prevention. Anything that you can do to sort of put a barrier there is really effective.
Great, thank you. Any additional final questions? Seeing none, I just want to say thank you very much. Um, if, if you could share any additional information, any slides? You've mentioned slide presentations that you may have done elsewhere with the council. We'd appreciate that. We'll make sure it gets disseminated to the body.
The website is mentioned on the postcard that you may have been given. It's, uh, besmartforkids.org. Uh, that will, that also encourages, as Melissa said, parents to talk about gun, guns in the home as they would with other issues that you talk about on a playdate. We want to normalize that conversation.
Great, thank you again. Thanks very much.
May I give this to you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with no further business before the Public Safety Committee, we stand adjourned.
Councilmember Gruber?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Smith? Vice President Lupien?
Here.
President Melendez?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Washington. We're joined by several other members of council. I'll just say upfront, we are going to, um, do everything in our power to be done at five o'clock exactly, because we have a joint hearing with the school board afterwards. We'll just be mindful of the fact that we have guests coming in. I'm gonna be, uh, watching the clock pretty closely. Um, we're also gonna hold all of the budget items in committee, as is customary. We did lengthy hearings earlier, uh, in the cycle, and, uh, we'll vote on them on actual council night. So there won't be much discussion about those. Um, there is one quick presentation that we want to start with on, uh, introductory two fifty-one, which is about the city's debt limit. So I would invite, uh, OMB Director Burns and his team to just share with us a broad overview of the debt limit before we open up some questions for votes.
Thanks, Chair Gruber, for the opportunity, and we're mindful of the time constraints here tonight. So, uh, briefly to give a presentation is Assistant Director in the Office of Management and Budget Suzanne Warren. Uh, and our Finance Director will also chime in as well. So Suzanne?
Okay, I promise not to talk very long. I have been on both sides of this equation. About twenty-two years ago, I worked in the Finance Director's office and managed the note, uh, and bond debt for the city. And now I'm on the other side in the Office of Management and Budget. Um, so we have two different debt limits that the city has. One is imposed by the state constitution, and it is detailed in the budget book in the capital improvement program section, page six. And it limits our borrowing to nine percent of the five-year average full valuation assessed value for the city. So that limit currently, as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, would be seven hundred and forty-three million. The state allows us to exclude water debt. They recognize the importance of providing, uh, clean, fresh water. So they exclude that from the debt limit. Uh, in essence, they believe we could borrow another four hundred and seventy-five million dollars, and we would still be okay. We don't like that, though. Um, the city has a self-imposed debt limit that was established back in nineteen eighty-one that limits any new borrowing to what we pay back in that particular year for tax-supported funds to any principal, uh, bond and bond anticipation note repayments. So at the beginning of the CIP process, we will work with finance to determine what the future repayments will be for that next fiscal year, excluding anything that was previously approved as an exception to the debt limit. Exceptions can only be sought if there is, um, they couldn't, it's an emergency purpose, so it could not be reasonably expected to be foreseen. Or if the project doesn't move forward, it would pose public safety or a financial risk. Um, I don't, Kim, do you want to talk about the, uh, how you come up with the, the debt limit itself? Or the, the schedule of repayments?
Yep. So actually, am I, I'm sorry, can I, can everyone hear me?
Not, not that well, actually.
How about now?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, um, what we do is, um, there's actually a, um, process that we use based on the local finance law, which, um, has, gives us the, uh, purpose, um, for use for the items that we're financing for capital expenditures. So it's called a PPU. Um, so what we do is, we do what's called half-life financing. And that half-life financing actually allows us to pay off our debt, um, sooner than anticipated um, as a result of local finance laws. So if, let's say, something, um, can be financed, um, according to local finance law for twenty years, we do what's called half-life financing, so we finance it for ten years. So that's, you know, that's essentially how we would calculate our repayment schedule based on the capital asset that we're financing.
So just to, uh, put a finer point of that, and I would, um, direct my colleagues to, uh, to introductory two fifty-one. Um, the top of the page, there's, uh, attached to the twenty-three, twenty-four debt authorization plans. So that number there, the twenty-two million, eight hundred, five thousand, five hundred dollars. That number is calculated in advance of the year by the Finance Department every year, based on what we anticipate paying back from previous year's borrowing.
Yes, we have, we actually, we keep track of the repayment schedule by fund. Um, and that, that repayment schedule is actually furnished to the Budget Bureau um, for the compilation of data to be compiled in the budget book.
Got it. And so in this particular year, it's been, it's being proposed that we actually create an exception to that debt limit for an additional eight million, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred, because there's enough projects in CIP, et cetera, that we want to borrow for this year, above and beyond what we're gonna pay back.
Exactly, and that's what council would actually approve. Council has to approve any exception to the debt limit. And that's, that's actually in, included in the, um, the debt, the debt policy itself.
Great. Before I pass it off to my colleagues for any questions they might have about that, and I would just point out that all of the specific projects for the exceptions are later down in that paragraph. Can, can someone just explain a little bit about the idea of debt rollover from previous years? And what that means and how it's calculated?
Uh, sure. Uh, so if you go back to nineteen eighty-six, there was a resolution passed by council back in nineteen eighty-six, which determined that the immediately preceding two years would automatically roll over. But anything that was older than that could only be rolled over with the approval of city council. That's why we have them listed individually on the transmittal, and then again in the legislation.
Got it. So I just thought this was a, a useful thing to get a little bit of, uh, depth and clarity on, uh, especially for, well, for two fifty-one, but also as it relates to the overall budget, which we'll be voting on later this month. I want to see if any of my colleagues have any questions. Councilmember Pio?
Thank you. So for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three, uh, it states that we're gonna have a balance of fourteen point four million for rollover. Does that mean that we have currently a debt of fourteen point four million that we have to pay back?
Uh, no, that means you, we have not sought authorization from city council for those particular, uh, authorizations yet.
So this is what you're asking for, is for us to get into debt, essentially, for fourteen point four million?
Well, you already authorized that debt limit last year, last fiscal year. So this is the rollover, what we have not yet asked you to authorize. So one of the attachments that I think may have come a little bit later is a copy of our debt authorization plan. And listed on that by fiscal year is what we have not borrowed from each particular debt limit. So you, you can see, you'll see the new year, twenty-three, twenty-four. You'll see what's outstanding for projects that have not moved forward for all the previous fiscal years.
I would also just add, Councilmember Pio, that, 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 the, the idea of debt by itself, without thinking about what our general fund is, and in addition, what our bond rating is, is out of context. We're not just asking to take out money that we don't have, or don't have a track record of paying back. It's just making sure that we're being clear about what we are going to borrow for the upcoming year.
Well, not only that, how long would it take to pay that money back? So if we're asking for a debt limit increase, and we're saying it's gonna take ten years for us to pay it back, then are we really, are we really showing a surplus in our budgets?
Well, that gives us the opportunity to plan for those payback periods. So we, we will know, um, and this is, this happens, uh, in the Finance Director's office. When we borrow funds, uh, what the Finance Director mentioned was there's a- When we borrow funds, what the Finance Director mentioned was there's a period of probable usefulness. So if a water bond ordinance has a period of probable usefulness of twenty years, we will schedule the repayment to happen in ten. And bond rating agencies love the fact that we have a self-imposed debt limit as well as the fact that we half-life our debt. So our, our debt is paid back a lot quicker than many other municipalities.
Yeah, the half-life financing policy basically states, you know, as I mentioned earlier, Councilmember P O, that whatever the useful life of a capital asset is, that we will actually finance that for half of that period. So essentially, we retire essentially over ninety percent of our debt within ten years.
Yeah, I think it's important to mention as well, from an operating budget standpoint. So whenever we think of debt, we think of capital projects because that's what we're ultimately financing. But in the operating budget each year, we budget as an operating expense the amount of debt service payments that we have to make in that year. So that is an ongoing component of each year's operating budget.
Okay. And it's also reflective in the levy. If you look at the pages containing how the levy is, how we actually come up with the levy amount, so there is a levy amount for capital projects. There's a levy amount for debt service and also a levy amount for our operating expenses. And if you look at the budget, if you, if you look at the budget book, you'll see that the total levy amount represents a portion of, of those particular aspects. Capital, operating, and debt service.
Okay. I'm just, what's going through my mind is, if we continue to roll over more debt, even though it's going to take ten years, does that then reflect on why we're increasing the taxes of the citizens?
It's not money we've borrowed yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't borrowed it yet.
So no. Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson?
No, I was just going to make that point, that we haven't borrowed. Just for clarity, we have not borrowed these dollars. These are dollars that we have the authorization to borrow. We haven't. So it's like, so the policy states that you have to come back to us and say, hey, we didn't borrow it yet. Can we still keep it so we can use it in the future?
That's right. And actually, we're looking at, when, we, we take a holistic approach to debt service. So we're looking at not only what we borrowed, but also what's been authorized to borrow that we haven't borrowed. So we keep that in, in context as well.
And that's also why you're coming to, even though there are dollars in past years with bonds that are authorized that we have not used those dollars, that's, you can't use those dollars for another purpose. You can only use them specifically and particularly for the purposes stating in the bond authorization. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's why you're coming back to us now and saying, okay, well, this year is different. We actually need to exceed the limit that, that council imposed on us, and it's that eight million dollars we need to go over it for, and here's what we're looking to use, we're looking to use those dollars for. Is that correct?
And we need to get council's blessing in order to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Well presented, well written. Appreciate you.
Any final questions on this? Yeah, thank you, all three of you, very much for all the clarity on that. Mayor, anything you wanted to add and put your banker hat on for a second?
No, other than, you know, our goal is to keep our bond rating where it is, and this, this allows us to continue to do that.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. We're going to move on right now to the introductorys number two thirty-nine, authorizing an agreement for workers' compensation case management and medical claim services. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number two forty, authorizing a mandatory agreement for budget software and services. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number two forty-one, authorizing an agreement for the Clarissa Street uprooted exhibit. There is one disclosure, that's for myself, as I'm the council liaison to the Rochester Public Library Board. I'm only required to disclose this information and may participate in the discussion and the vote. Any questions, comments, or concerns on two forty-one? Councilmember Smith?
Yes, so I see that forty thousand is what's given, but I'm wondering how much is needed for an optimal exhibit?
The forty thousand was what was quoted to us by Jennifer Bannister from Teen Empowerment.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comment?
President Melendez, go ahead.
Yes, so I, I think Councilmember Smith, we might be along the same lines. I had a conversation with Teen Empowerment. Certainly, I support this item as it is, but there's also a desire for them to do some mural work in the community. So this might be something that council revisits with, with potential funds that we may have. But I, I do want to follow up on this item in terms of the project on the whole.
And longer-term, Director Utaro, is this is something that, I just want clarity. This is something that Teen Empowerment and the committee wants to keep in the library? Or the library is just basically a temporary home?
The library is a temporary home. The exhibit will be in the Rundle Building through the end of twenty twenty-four while the committee works on determining and securing a permanent location in the third ward.
And this forty thousand is being authorized, because this, this isn't the first time we've authorized some money for this. This helps to set up the space in there. If, let's just say hypothetically, worst-case scenario, they don't have a more permanent home by the end of twenty twenty-four, does this money provide enough to keep it there moving forward, or is there an annual cost?
The, as I understand it, these funds will go towards purchasing physical equipment to support the exhibit, such as A V equipment and display and exhibit cases. During the period of time that the exhibit will be at the library, library staff will assist Teen Empowerment with tours and interpretations of the exhibit. Beyond twenty twenty-four, I can't comment on whether the library will, at that point, have another use for the space.
Got it. Okay. Any further questions on two forty-one? Now I'll take a motion? It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number two forty-two, amending ordinance twenty-two dash two ninety-six, twenty twenty-two dash two ninety-six relating to the public library's Rundle Building air quality improvements. There's one disclosure for myself, as I am the council liaison to the Rochester Public Library Board. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Thank you for doing anything related to air quality, especially given the circumstances right now. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number two forty-three, authorizing an agreement for undoing racism, community organizing workshops. So Mayor Evans, Dr. Nichols had reached out about potentially being able to speak on this. I know that she wasn't able to come to this meeting. Anything you want to just mention about?
Yeah, I want to add is, some council members might remember this. We wanted to do this in twenty...
Nineteen, maybe.
Nineteen and twenty, and then COVID hit, and then it kept getting postponed, and then we wanted to do it in last year. So we're hoping that, so the idea is that this will be available to city staff, council members, all of, all of my administration will be required to go through it. We hope that all council and possibly council staff can go through it, as well as community members. And everyone's mixed up, so it's not everybody all at the same time. So this has been something that we wanted to do for a long time. So we're finally getting around to being able to do it, and the signups will be for September and October. Deputy Mayor, anything else you want to add? Is that it? Yeah, so.
I'll just share, I had the opportunity to actually go through these trainings as part of a project that, a previous, as part of a project the previous administration worked on, and it's a very powerful training. I think I, I, I think it suffered a little bit being on Zoom, and I was very eager to hear Rose saying it's going to be back in person. So I think that'll be great. I, I'd appreciate it if the administration would send us a list of the staff that it's, I assume it's compulsory for certain staff. Is that right?
Well, yeah, especially S M T is definitely compulsory for it.
So if you could just share with us a list of who is going to be doing the training, I, I'm sure President Melendez and, and our staff will give council plenty of time to figure out where we fit into that. But then I think it's also critical to understand who, which community members or organizations are being targeted, because this is a big investment in very useful trainings, but we'd like to know who and what and when.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any questions from council? Vice President Lupien?
I just want to clarify, is this the training that Willie, Councilmember Lightfoot was going to?
Yes.
Yes.
And at the time, it was Dr. Lomax Campbell who was with the real team bringing it to City Hall, and that's actually who I did it with as well. I saw, Councilmember P O?
Thank you. This is another legislation with no R F P. I find it hard to believe that we don't have a local organization that can teach us about anti-racism. That is a statement. It's not really a question, I guess.
No, I get it, but this is just the continuation only because they've done the training already? That, that's, that's the only why. Otherwise, we would have, we would have done an R F P, but this was a continuation. I think you were on council, yeah, you were on council when we were going to do this before, but COVID hit, so we, we, we didn't have a chance to do it. So that's, that's the only reason why it's that way.
It's also a very, it's a very, very, very specific training. It's not a training that there's other, I mean, there's other anti-racism trainings for sure in Rochester. There's not other, this particular training. It's, I think, probably copyrighted in some ways, I'd imagine. Any further questions from council? Now I'll take a motion?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number two forty-four, authorizing an agreement for Managed Security Operations Center Service, Center Service. There's an amendment in front of us. I'd like to make a motion to amend introductory number two forty-four to incorporate the new compensation amounts as provided. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Now the, let's vote on the motion as amended to incorporate the new compensation amounts as provided. All in favor, please, or I probably need a motion for that. I'll take a motion for the amended version.
I'll move it.
It's been moved. Can I get a second? And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number two forty-five, authorizing an agreement for fireworks displays. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it. Second.
Vice President Lupien?
When are we getting the drones back?
It's a long, it's a conversation we had, talked to the communications team about potentially starting to do some.
I, I want them back, so hopefully soon.
Well, I want, I want them back in, in expense of the fireworks show, which I understand may be a very unpopular opinion. So hopefully the communications team.
You know, I'm not a big fireworks guy. You know, people go both, but I think we can have the best of, of, you know, people should know how I feel about fireworks. But there's some in the community that like it. So I'd like to have both if, if possible. So I'm a big fan of the drones for sure.
But it would, the communications team has agreed to start to do some kind of public engagement over the course of the next year about just how many people would be upset about seeing it go away.
Right.
Because I think we're, we are recognizing that there's an environmental impact, there's an impact for veterans, dogs, so many other.
Or just the noise.
Yeah, precisely.
But, but, you know.
But I told them I would begrudgingly vote, vote yes for today. Any further questions on fireworks display? Now I'll take a motion?
Move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number two forty-six, authorizing an agreement for the twenty twenty-three Puerto Rican Festival. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number two forty-seven, authorizing an agreement related to the twenty twenty-three Rock Holiday Village event. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I don't think I do.
Councilmember Lupien?
I think I found it. It's an increase of five thousand, five thousand dollars for this year. It's fifty-five last year.
I believe council, that is correct, council vice president, yes. Yeah.
Is that just, you know, a cost of doing business has increased, or is it?
Yeah, I think it's just, you know, the standard.
Thanks.
Any additional questions on Holiday Village? If now take a motion?
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number two forty-eight, authorizing an agreement to implement a cloud-based internal audit management solution. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Councilmember Martin, you have a question?
Yes, just a quick explanation of what it does.
Tim here.
Yeah, sure. This will actually allow us to implement an end-to-end internal audit management platform. So it will basically automate our entire process from the beginning, testing, all the way to report writing. It also will allow us to integrate the responses from the department so they can import their data that we need to look at into the system. It takes us really out of Excel, Word, Outlook, copy, pasting, that type of thing. It also provides a dashboard for some real-time analysis of the different phases of our audit and which ones are kind of moving more quickly than others, and, and also has a data analytic capability.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion on two forty-eight?
Move it.
Moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number two forty-nine, amending the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget by appropriating unanticipated revenue to the operating budget of the Police Department. Any questions, comments, or concerns? We, everyone saw the, the memo on this, I presume, that President Melendez sent. Any questions people have for the mayor, for, let's see, the chief here?
So in total, how much money has been allocated to overtime for R P D in this fiscal year?
Yep. I think in the spirit of, of being a hundred percent accurate, we'll provide that in writing.
I'll, I'll just make a comment, I guess. I think we all recognize that overtime is a problem. It's a problem that seems to, I don't know that it's getting worse. It's certainly not getting better. And it's changed a little bit, as we talked about in the budget hearing, from a place where it seems like there's all sorts of, of interest in overtime to now a place where we, we're hearing rumblings of concern about compulsory overtime for already short staff. We have vacancies that we know we're not going to be able to fill and fold during the course of the school, of the, of the fiscal year. So I guess I would just ask, and I know you've already talked about this at length, Director Burns and Mayor Evans, but if you could just provide a snapshot of what the administration's going to do to keep this number in order? Because this, I, I don't think this, anyone finds this number to be acceptable. So what's the, what's the short version of that, of that answer?
Well, I, I think the short version is, is that we have to see what things we would have to say no, no to, what things aren't contractual in terms of obligation, and then it can, and then it requires a conversation with our citizens. Because, and that's, and that's a longer-term conversation, because we have people who expect minimum coverage for levels of calls. So how do we cover those based upon the numbers that we have? You know, and, and I mean, for example, Fourth of July, we mandate people to work. They have to come in, and if they're not working, and we, and we force them to work, that's overtime. So on holidays and those other events. So it's not, overtime is, and, and the comptroller just did a, a great report on state overtime, of state workers and them having to spend time on overtime. And then he said, you know, that's, it's, it's not a good thing for the workforce when you have to force people to work overtime. So we, we'll have to look at a, a large-scale panoramic view of how we look at, if we want to get the number down, how we look at responding to calls, how we look at scheduling, how we look at our, our force number, and those, and those sorts of things. And then obviously, the goal is, is to be able to recruit to fill those positions, which you know is extremely hard, because when you have nine in class and you have ten retired, you're at a negative number. So it, it's, it's a challenge for sure that we continue to struggle with. But I think that memo that you got lays it out in a very transparent way. It's, it's what we're dealing with, and not just us, but municipalities across the country.
Yeah, I am a firm believer that special events are a part of the way that we can begin to change this a little bit. I recognize that special events are largely paid for. It may not change too much of the budget of, of all of this, but the idea that we are still assigning mandatory police numbers to special events as though we have a police force without eighty vacancies doesn't make sense to me. Things are different now than they were five years ago.
Yeah, and I think even with the special events, even if, let's say, we change that, that's still, that's, we're still going to have a, a large problem. So we have to look at this from a holistic perspective. I think special events is one piece of it, but again, even if we did wave and said we're not going to do any special events, we still would have this problem that we have, because even, and just to cover basic shifts in time. So, so we have to look at it from a holistic perspective. I, I am, I am, and as I've said to you, but I've had this conversation with the council president, I'm, I'm very concerned with the, the numbers. And we, and we have to find a creative, innovative way to try to do different things. And I know we don't have a lot of time to talk about it today, but I think that we'll be continuing to engage in those conversations throughout this, you know, this coming year.
What I, I'll, I'll see if anyone else has any comments on this, but what I was hoping would, would bubble up in your answer is that the new Locust Club agreement hopefully will give an opportunity to minimize some of these numbers.
It, it will, it will. But again, I think, I, I think multiple things will help. It will, it will. But again, I think, I think multiple things will help minimize the number, but I still want to, I still think it's important to dramatize the difficulty of what we're facing right now. So I like being transparent, so I don't want to give the impression that this is something that I have a magic wand for and it's gonna be gone like tomorrow if we did two things. So I think we can fix it, but it's gonna take some time. It's gonna take some work with councils, it's gonna take some work with the larger communities, it's gonna take some work with within RPD, with the Locust Club. It's definitely multi-layered in order to bring that number down.
Any questions from colleagues? Vice President Lupien.
We, I remember having this conversation, I don't know, maybe six months ago when we, when we discovered that, or we, you know, were told that officers were now two to a vehicle, that we were gonna do, I don't know if it was a utilization study or what we called it, but to understand how we can better allocate the police that we do have. When, when are we gonna do that?
That's, that's actually still going, that's actually still going on. That's something that the chief has worked on right now. And not all officers are still two to a vehicle. I mean, that was just for a short period of time.
But with the study and how we're gonna allocate, I think that's what you were referring to.
But yeah, that's still, that's still part in an ongoing process. Some stuff has to be negotiated. And, but yeah, that's still, that's still a part of this overall process.
So, so are we going to be embarking on a study or, you know, having somebody come in? Or is it just something that the chief is fitting in?
The chief, the chief has already, has ideas about how, how, how he can, how he can attack the problem.
Then we just have to implement them.
Exactly. And it's not, and as you know, nothing is as simple as the paper it's written on, and that's the, and that's the challenge.
My second question is, you know, we've been talking about doing this 911 deep-dive study since January, and I know that there's been ongoing conversations with the Law Enforcement Action Partnership. Where is the, where is that study?
It's included in this year's budget, and that study is gonna happen during the second half of this year.
The second half of this year?
July 1st, as we start our new fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Any last questions on 249?
Yeah, just like a comment. I think even from the previous administration to now, all of us essentially agree that the cost of overtime is troubling. The amount of money that we give RPD in comparison to all the other essential services that exist, it's just not okay. I mean, even looking at this additional $2 million, that's essentially half the budget of the Office of Violence Prevention. So for me, it's really important that we start to build out the programs that can take up more space and fill the roles of police in our community. And we keep referring to this model that we're working within where they have to fill, fill certain roles, fill certain positions. I think it's, we're at a point where we have to realize the model we have is not working. We're never going to fill these seats that exist, and we have to try a different model. In comparison to other cities, we have more police officers per capita than many cities our size. So they're just a combination of things we could be looking at. I don't feel the sense of urgency, like Councilmember Lupien said, since January for this year, we've been talking about it. For me, looking back, it's been since the previous administration, overtime has been an issue. So it's really sad to see that it's not changing and we're going to continue to give money to RPD.
Any further comments? If not, I'll take a motion on 249. So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introducting number 250, authorizing competitive grant applications. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introducting number 251, this is what we had a presentation on, a resolution approving the 23-24 debt limit for general municipal purposes. There are two disclosures for this item. The first one is from myself, as I'm the council liaison to the Rochester Public Library Board, and the second is from Council President Melendez, he sits on the board of the Rochester Riverside Convention Center Corporation. Both of us are only required to disclose, and we can participate in discussion and vote. Any questions, comments, or concerns on 251 about the debt limit?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introducting number 252, authorizing funding and amending the 22-23 budget in relation to the New York State Healthcare and Mental Hygiene Worker Bonus Program. Any questions, comments, or concerns other than kudos to the administration for finding ways to get more staff into this program?
Well, you know, and this is the, folks thought that firefighters would not qualify, but because they are EMTs, we were able to get them qualified, and you will see one soon for pick workers as well, so.
I think that's in here.
It's in here.
Yeah, so that's.
And it's a shame that they don't count recreation workers, considering those folks were oftentimes at the front lines of the vaccination clinics and giving away PPE and all that stuff. I would really like the state to have a more expansive view of this.
Yeah. But we worked hard to be able to get as many of our employees as possible qualified for this, so this is reflected in the legislation.
My question is just with the different stages, I think they're called. Are, is every employee that's eligible getting the full amount? The three, was it 3,000?
When you say the full amount, you mean?
I think the maximum I saw in here was 3,000, but it wasn't clear to me with the different stages.
Yeah, I think the state kind of figures that out on what each employee gets, so we can, we can find out.
Okay.
Yeah, because we send a list to the state, they decide who they are, and then they kind of authorize whoever the folks are, so.
By, by job type?
By job type.
Okay.
Yeah.
The fire department just recently submitted another filing that ended, I think, on March 31st. So this next bunch of money should include some for pick people and any firefighters that didn't receive the maximum already.
I guess I'm thinking of it like each pot, each stage is separate money, and every time they apply, they get more money.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but you can only get 1,500 for one period, up to a max of 3,000.
Okay.
So I think most fire personnel now, through this payment, will have received the maximum. We will come back to you, likely to amend the 23-24 budget when we receive that, that next pot of money.
And maybe the pick workers aren't gonna get the maximum, but will there be another opportunity?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you.
Any further questions on 252? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introducting number 253, authorizing professional services agreement with WXXI, public broadcasting council, public broadcasting for broadcasting city council meetings. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introducting number 254, authorizing an agreement with General Code LLC for publication of the city charter and code. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introducting number 255, adoption of the budget estimates for municipal purposes for the 23-24 fiscal year, appropriation of sums set forth therein, and approving commercial refuse fees. We will be holding this item in committee. Introducting number 256, adoption of the budget estimates for school purposes for the 23-24 fiscal year and appropriation of sums set forth therein. We will be holding this item in committee. Introducting number 257, levying taxes for municipal purposes for the fiscal year commencing July 1/23 and expiring June 30/24. We will be holding this item in committee. Introducting number 258, levying taxes for school purposes for the fiscal year commencing July 1/23 and expiring June 30/24. We will be holding this item in committee. Introducting number 259, local improvement ordinance, street cleaning, street and sidewalks, no removal, and hazardous sidewalk repair commencing July 1/23 and expiring June 30/24. We will be holding this item in committee. Introducting number 260, confirming the assessments, amounts, and charges to be inserted in the annual tax rolls for the fiscal year commencing July 1/23 and expiring June 30/24. We will be holding this item in committee. And finally, oh no, not finally, introducting number 261, amending the municipal code with respect to water rates. We will be holding this item in committee. And finally, introducting number 263, appropriating funds and amending the 22-23 budget to support the purchase of MiFi devices. President Melendez, this came to us just prior to the council meeting. Do you want to make a comment on it? And would you like us to, I'm certainly prepared to vote on more MiFi's, but we can also hold it if you prefer.
I'd like to hold it to allow my colleagues to take a look at this and have any questions that they may have for me. But essentially, during the budget hearings, we heard of this need for the MiFi's in libraries, and would like to provide the opportunity for council to vote on, moving some resources in that direction.
Mayor Evans, Director Utaro, I.
No, I would just say, listen, these things are so popular, so anything we can do to get more of them, we're grateful for.
Director Utaro, we got you 100 more MiFi devices tomorrow. Would they all be used?
Every one of them would be used.
Great. We will hold this and vote on it at the full council meeting, but looking forward to seeing that come out and move forward. Any final questions or comments from the Finance Committee? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
We're gonna allow about five minutes for transition, so we'll kick off public hearings at 5:15.
Councilmember Pio?
Here.
Councilmember Smith? Vice President Lupien?
Here.
President Melendez?
Here.
And for the school board. Commissioner Adams? Commissioner Elliott? Commissioner LeBron?
Present.
Commissioner Malloy?
Present.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Powell? Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you.
So I'd like to ask everyone in the room, the council and the board of education commissioners, to join me in a moment of silence during Gun Violence Awareness Month. As we all know, we've experienced great trauma, particularly in the last 30 days or so, and there's a lot of issues in our community, and gun violence has to end. We have to work towards that end. And with that, I ask you all to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Councilmember Patterson, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So now we'll begin our public hearings, and I'll turn it over to Clerk Washington. Before I do that, actually, I would like to note that we will leave all of the hearings open, as we anticipate people may come at different times. So we will go in order, and then at the end, we'll revisit if there's any additional speakers. Clerk Washington? One error on my part, I'd like to also acknowledge the superintendent is here with us today, Carmine Peluso, and also Dr. Nelms, I believe it's somewhere near there, there's Dr. Nelms. So I want to acknowledge the superintendent for the EPO as well. And with that, I'll turn it to Clerk Washington.
Pursuant to law, public hearing will now be had on the following matter. Adoption of budget estimates for municipal purposes for the 2023-24 fiscal year. Appropriation of suns set forth therein in approving commercial refuge fees. Introductory number 255. Any persons desired to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard. And I apologize in advance if I mess up your name. So is Kynra Johnson here? Okay, Kynra is followed by Constance Volk.
Thank you, sorry. My name is Kynra Johnson, I'm a Red volunteer, and I live in the 19th ward. I'm here to reiterate why a publicly-owned utility makes a huge amount of financial sense for our region, and ask you to pass a budget amendment to reserve funding for the study. The first and most obvious, a public utility would be not-for-profit. So we would no longer be seeing $100 million annually leaving our region and going to a multinational company. Second, currently, we pay for all of our GNE's costs, plus a guaranteed rate of profit. A public utility can borrow at about half the cost of an investor-owned one. So while it's true that the grid needs investment, the quicker we can transition, and the more transparent and cheaper that will be for us, the constituents. Third, in New York State, public utilities have preferential access to cheap renewable power of the New York Power Authority. With the recent passage of the Build Public Renewables Act, there will soon be much more public renewables and an expanded base of cheap power that is only directly available to public utilities. Why would we pass that by? An additional fear and stated obstacle is that with a public utility, local governments would lose the property tax revenue of our GNE. Again, the Red campaign is fully committed that in this transition, no revenue to public institutions is lost. There is a standard practice for payment in lieu of taxes in these situations, and these commitments are built into our draft RFP. Our community has so much to gain and nothing to lose. We need you to do what you can do, and vote for a budget amendment to reserve $500,000 in the budget to fund a public utility implementation study now. I still have 45 seconds. Fund the study, please. Fund the study, please. Fund the study, please. Please, fund the study. Fund the study. Fund the study. Please, fund the study. Fund the study. Fund the study. Please, for your residents, fund the study. I'm a constituent. Please, fund the study. 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 It would help city residents. Please, fund the study. Please, fund the study. Please, fund the study. I'm asking again, for all Rochester residents, please, fund the study. It would also help the county. Please, fund the study. Please, fund the study. And please, fund the study. Thank you.
Constance Volk? She's followed by Bridget Hurley?
I am, I appreciate this opportunity to speak as the budget process conclusion nears. I am Constance Connie Volk, a city resident and a member of Downtown First Universalist Church. We church members continue to deal with public urination and defecation on our property, as many other churches do, because of the lack of public 24/7 restrooms. A viable, livable, inviting city needs public 24/7 restrooms. There is a public restroom in the city-operated building that serves midtown parking garage. Because of lack of signage, it is rarely used during its present hours of 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. As it now stands, it's basically hidden. I went down to visit it this morning, and in spite of the hours of supposed to be opened from 6:00 to 6:00, it was locked. And I knocked on the door, and finally, a security person came to open it up. We ask, as a starter project, to expand public restrooms in the city of Rochester, to include signage in the midtown parking garage, to point to the restrooms to those who need them, and to increase the hours to 24/7, having them actually open unlocked. After the starter project is completed, we will continue our efforts to increase availability of public restrooms in other parts of Rochester, with Washington Square at the top of the list. 60 years ago, First Universalist Church had the opportunity to move out of the city. A site in the town of Parenton was selected as a possibility to build a new church, but in the end, we voted to stay as an important urban presence to nurture the spirit and serve the community. We are still committed to the city of Rochester, and implore you to follow through with plans to serve the community by expanding the hours of the midtown parking garage and adding adequate signage to no longer make these restrooms a hidden space. Thank you for the opportunity to express my thoughts.
Bridget Hurley is followed by Courtney Kristin?
Good evening. I'm Bridget Hurley from the Children's Agenda. Appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today. So as you'll see in the budget document, review document that I emailed you, and also I believe the clerk has to give to you, the Children's Agenda believes that there are many positive proposals in the proposed budget that will benefit children and youth, and I'll mention those in a couple of minutes. But I also do want to note that the increased transparency and accountability in the budget document through the online format, and also note the availability of publicly facing dashboards for ARPA funding, for the PIC team, and also, of course, for the Open Data Portal. So we just generally really appreciate all the publicly available information on the city website. So in terms of the proposed budget, I'll just name a couple of things that we heartily support. The ARPA-funded social-emotional services in, for our centers. The second site for the summer LEAP program for preschoolers. The substantial investments in our center, particularly in staffing, which you've heard from us for years about our interest in longer, or excuse me, more full-time staffing in the our centers, and also in parks and libraries. The biggest concern we have in, for our community is the mental and emotional well-being of our children and youth. So we all know the numbers, I'm not going to restate those. We're in a place we've never been before, and so we need to really focus resources on the appropriate response to invest in our youth's well-being. The response, of course, must be multifaceted, best if it's coordinated with other actors in the community who are addressing social, mental well-being of youth, such as the county and the city school district. There are advocacy opportunities that I think would bring funds and resources to the city and to the youth. To the great, what the research says is that to the greatest extent possible, the response should involve trained, caring adults from the youth's community, and not exclusively law enforcement. We recommend that you amend the proposed budget to redirect funds to support more programs and services that meet those criteria. And as always, we're happy to discuss our budget review with you at any time. Thank you.
Courtney Kristin is followed by Clayton Lyons.
Hi, I'm Courtney Kristin. I'm a homeowner in the city of Rochester. I teach social change leadership at the University of Rochester, and I'm a volunteer with Metro Justice. I moved back home to Rochester last year and wanted to find a way to make a difference in my community. Metro Justice's Rochester for Energy Democracy campaign is where I want to spend my time. New York state law states that with an implementation study in a positive referendum, our GNE would be forced to sell to the public. I urge you not to write off this initiative as too big of an undertaking, or waiting for external funding for the implementation study. This campaign has resonated with every constituent I've spoken to, Democrat, Republican, Independent, young, old, city, suburbs, rich or poor. We're in a time in our country where pride and morale are low, poverty is high, divisiveness reigns supreme, and politicians are not trusted. People are tired of Red versus Blue ego trips, and are looking for policymakers to enact legislation that will better American lives. We are in need of a focus on our local communities for the overall betterment of humanity. Transitioning to public power tackles two wicked problems: the climate emergency, local poverty, and thus crime. The philosophy is simple: our local community should own our power instead of renting it from a company in Spain. With an implementation study, a referendum, and a buyout financed through bonds paid back over time collectively by our rates, not by taxes, we can save money and have an energy system that serves our community. You have an opportunity to make a big difference, you can leave a legacy, we, the people of Rochester, want to help. Let's allocate $500,000 to fund this implementation study. And although I do enjoy coming to advocate for my community, I really look forward to the day I do not need to speak on this issue.
Clayton Lyons? He's followed by Dr. Michelle Weatherlawn?
Hello, City Council, and hello, RCSD. My name is Clayton, and I'm a resident of the South Wedge. I'm here to promote budget priorities that I know will assist the working people of Rochester. I want to speak about three urgent needs which I feel should be included in your budget. All of these things can be supplemented by scaling back the police budget, which is continuously the only department receiving a steady increase of funds. Now, priority number one: housing. We need more affordable housing. I work with students dropping out, with young people involved in gun violence, and with families needing mediation. These are some of your most vulnerable constituents, and across the board, housing and security is the most common need and risk factor. The connection between gun violence, which I really appreciate the moment of silence, and housing and security is very clear in all of the empirical data. If we target housing and security, we will make change in the world of gun violence. Please find some solutions, including affordable housing and basic tenant protections. That's what we need desperately. Priority number two: food. We need to fully fund free school meals to the level it has been at since 2020. Any decrease is unacceptable. And I know we're losing federal support, which is why this might go down, it's very unfortunate, but hunger is a substantial issue in our community, and I feel we need to maintain all food programs in full, even if it means paying more from our own pockets because we're not receiving federal support. Second point on food, I want to highlight the need for city staffing at the West Side Farmer's Market. So were there more paid staff there? It would increase capacity, increase operating hours, and the ability for more people to secure healthy food access. There are a number of food deserts, and this is one way the city can actually play a role in being a solution to those food deserts. Now, priority number three is the Red campaign. Over the course of this year, we have gained the support of thousands of your constituents in our fight to replace our GNE with a public utility. Now is the time for you to do your part, and please commit $500,000 to fund a public utility implementation study. Now, why might you want to do that? Well, here are some pretty concrete reasons. For one, in New York State, public utilities have preferential access to cheap renewable energy through the New York Power Authority. That is one reason why they're up to 60% cheaper than their private utilities. Reason number two, for the American Power Association, public utilities make greater financial contributions to local governments. So on average, public utilities pay 33% more in surplus revenue than private utilities pay in taxes, right? That's more money going to you to do whatever you feel is necessary with it. So you would get more money for the city simply by having surplus and not having corporations dodge taxes, which they're really good at. Finally, public utilities provide free and discounted electricity to your city buildings, saving you money, and public utilities share equipment and personnel and information with the city, saving you a lot of time and energy when things go wrong. So all these reasons are why you should fund three really crucial issues: housing, food, and energy. Thank you very much.
Dr. Michelle Weatherlawn is followed by Alitha Pussy?
Hello, City Council and School Board. My name is Dr. Michelle Wenderlich. I'm the organizer and policy specialist for Metro Justice's Rochester for Energy Democracy campaign, and a resident of South Market View Heights. An implementation study for a public utility has so much public support. Already, a majority on city council, both the county legislature president and Democratic minority leader, the Democratic delegation. A budget amendment to reserve funds for the study is something the council can do now to move forward pressure for this process that's so important for Rochester. As we're inundated with unbreathable air, and the continuation of outrageous billing mistakes and unaccountable service, our community is hurting, and we need action now. This is so possible. This is a regional issue with a regional law to solve it, and the city needs to be part of the process to commission the study, because we are the ones that are most affected by the our GNE crisis. In addition, the community deserves a comprehensive study with integrity. As the grassroots organization that has most engaged local residents on utility issues and built the movement for a public utility through rigorous research and organizing, Metro Justice has an irreplaceable expertise in public utilities and irreplaceable commitment to representing our community's best interest. We also provide necessary technical expertise, unique experience, and research capacity. I myself have both a master's in public policy and doctorate around issues of public utilities, and was involved in a municipalization process in Berlin, Germany, as well as holding a utility accountable in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Metro Justice needs to be represented on the RFP committee, along with other key community stakeholders such as the Labor Council. The draft study questions we've developed have received praise from national experts that... So in terms of the proposed budget, I'll just name a couple of things that we heartily support. The ARPA-funded social emotional services in four our centers. The second site for the summer LEAP program for preschoolers. The substantial investments in our center, particularly in staffing, which you've heard from us for years about our interest in longer, or excuse me, more full-time staffing in the our centers, and also in parks and libraries. The biggest concern we have in for our community is the mental and emotional well-being of our children and youth. So we all know the numbers. I'm not going to restate those. We're in a place we've never been before. And so we need to really focus resources on the appropriate response to invest in our youth's well-being. The response, of course, must be multifaceted, best if it's coordinated with other actors in the community who are addressing social or mental well-being of youth, such as the county and the city school district. There are advocacy opportunities that I think would bring funds and resources to the city and to the youth. To the great, what the research says is that, to the greatest extent possible, the response should involve trained, caring adults from the youth's community and not exclusively law enforcement. We recommend that you amend the proposed budget to redirect funds to support more programs and services that meet those criteria. And as always, we're happy to discuss our budget review with you at any time. Thank you.
Courtney Kristen is followed by Clayton Lyons.
Hi, I'm Courtney Kristen. I'm a homeowner in the city of Rochester. I teach social change leadership at the University of Rochester, and I'm a volunteer with Metro Justice. I moved back home to Rochester last year and wanted to find a way to make a difference in my community. Metro Justice's Rochester for Energy Democracy campaign is where I want to spend my time. New York state law states that with an implementation study in a positive referendum, RG&E would be forced to sell to the public. I urge you not to write off this initiative as too big of an undertaking or waiting for external funding for the implementation study. This campaign has resonated with every constituent I've spoken to, Democrat, Republican, Independent, young, old, city, suburbs, rich or poor. We're in a time in our country where pride and morale are low, poverty is high, divisiveness reigns supreme, and politicians are not trusted. People are tired of red versus blue ego trips and are looking for policymakers to enact legislation that will better American lives. We are in need of a focus on our local communities for the overall betterment of humanity. Transitioning to public power tackles two wicked problems: the climate emergency, local poverty, and thus crime. The philosophy is simple: our local community should own our power instead of renting it from a company in Spain. With an implementation study, a referendum, and a buyout financed through bonds paid back over time collectively by our rates, not by taxes, we can save money and have an energy system that serves our community. You have an opportunity to make a big difference. You can leave a legacy. We, the people of Rochester, want to help. Let's allocate $500,000 to fund this implementation study. And although I do enjoy coming to advocate for my community, I really look forward to the day I do not need to speak on this issue.
Clayton Lyons. He's followed by Dr. Michelle Weatherloin.
Hello, City Council, and hello, RCSD. My name is Clayton, and I'm a resident of the South Wedge. I'm here to promote budget priorities that I know will assist the working people of Rochester. I want to speak about three urgent needs which I feel should be included in your budget. All of these things can be supplemented by scaling back the police budget, which is continuously the only department receiving a steady increase of funds. Now, priority number one: housing. We need more affordable housing. I work with students dropping out, with young people involved in gun violence, and with families needing mediation. These are some of your most vulnerable constituents, and across the board, housing and security is the most common need and risk factor. The connection between gun violence, which I really appreciate the moment of silence, and housing and security is very clear in all of the empirical data. If we target housing and security, we will make change in the world of gun violence. Please find some solutions, including affordable housing and basic tenant protections. That's what we need desperately. Priority number two: food. We need to fully fund free school meals to the level it has been at since 2020. Any decrease is unacceptable. And I know we're losing federal support, which is why this might go down. It's very unfortunate. But hunger is a substantial issue in our community, and I feel we need to maintain all food programs in full, even if it means paying more from our own pockets because we're not receiving federal support. Second point on food: I want to highlight the need for city staffing at the West Side Farmer's Market. So were there more paid staff there? It would increase capacity, increase operating hours, and the ability for more people to secure healthy food access. There are a number of food deserts, and this is one way the city can actually play a role in being a solution to those food deserts. Now, priority number three is the RED campaign. Over the course of this year, we have gained the support of thousands of your constituents in our fight to replace RG&E with public utility. Now is the time for you to do your part, and please commit $500,000 to fund a public utility implementation study. Now, why might you want to do that? Well, here are some pretty concrete reasons. For one, in New York State, public utilities have preferential access to cheap renewable energy through the New York Power Authority. That is one reason why they're up to 60% cheaper than their private utilities. Reason number two: for the American Power Association, public utilities make greater financial contributions to local governments. So on average, public utilities pay 33% more in surplus revenue than private utilities pay in taxes, right? That's more money going to you to do whatever you feel is necessary with it. So you would get more money for the city simply by having surplus and not having corporations dodge taxes, which they're really good at. Finally, public utilities provide free and discounted electricity to your city buildings, saving you money. And public utilities share equipment and personnel and information with the city, saving you a lot of time and energy when things go wrong. So all these reasons are why you should fund three really crucial issues: housing, food, and energy. Thank you very much.
Dr. Michelle Weatherloin is followed by Alitha Pussey.
Hello, City Council and School Board. My name is Dr. Michelle Wenderlich. I'm the organizer and policy specialist for Metro Justice's Rochester for Energy Democracy campaign and a resident of South Market View Heights. An implementation study for a public utility has so much public support: already a majority on City Council, both the county legislature president and Democratic minority leader, the Democratic delegation. A budget amendment to reserve funds for the study is something the council can do now to move forward pressure for this process that's so important for Rochester. As we're inundated with unbreathable air and the continuation of outrageous billing mistakes and unaccountable service, our community is hurting, and we need action now. This is so possible. This is a regional issue with a regional law to solve it, and the city needs to be part of the process to commission the study because we are the ones that are most affected by the RG&E crisis. In addition, the community deserves a comprehensive study with integrity. As the grassroots organization that has most engaged local residents on utility issues and built the movement for a public utility through rigorous research and organizing, Metro Justice has an irreplaceable expertise in public utilities and irreplaceable commitment to representing our community's best interest. We also provide necessary technical expertise, unique experience, and research capacity. I myself have both a master's in public policy and doctorate around issues of public utilities and was involved in a manipulation process in Berlin, Germany, as well as holding a utility accountable in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Metro Justice needs to be represented on the RFP committee along with other key community stakeholders such as the Labor Council. The draft study questions we've developed have received praise from national experts that they are well-written, well-researched, and cover the right questions for a successful study. The issue of community stakeholders on RFP committees has no legal barriers and is in line with city guidelines. I want to present you today with an independent legal brief written by the University of Buffalo Legal Clinic on these matters. I ask you to take the first step to vote to reserve funding for a public utility study in the budget, for a budget amendment, and look forward to working with you all to vote on moving forward an implementation study with fair oversight and expert community representation as soon as possible. We additionally support the asks of the People's Budget for paid equity, community violence prevention, mental health services, social workers in libraries, and other asks, and want you to do the same in the budget amendment process. Thank you so much.
Alitha Pussey is followed by Carmelo Crassie.
Hello, all. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name's Alithia Pussey. I currently serve as a lead representative in the Energy Services Department at RG&E, and I have been there for 10 years. In my time here, we've made strides in hiring over 140 additional employees. We volunteer within the communities. We service and hold local pop-ups to further assist customers. We've initiated new construction such as gas lines, meter installations, and more to ensure we are better able to serve the community. Our tax revenue, estimated at around $165 million, has gone into supporting local schools, public safety, infrastructure, and more. A public utility would not be able to contribute to the tax base as we have. Not only so at RG&E, customer service is at the cornerstone of what we do. As an integral part of the community, we have made changes to our service staff to guarantee that work is coordinated and gets out to more people. We want to be your partners in helping you find solutions for your energy concerns. Because of these improvements, we have seen call wait times in our customer centers stabilize as well as drop in the percentage of estimated bills. We understand that service starts here, and we make it our mission to constantly learn and grow to serve you better. So as a result, we find that government-controlled power is not the answer. We prioritize our customers' needs in ways that government-controlled entities may not be able to do, and are held accountable by our regulator, the Public Service Commission. Thank you.
Carmelo Crassie. Is Carmelo here? He's followed by Crozenzio Cipione.
So first of all, I'm just going to take my time a little bit because I didn't realize I had three minutes, so I'm just going to take a moment. Excellent. Let us begin. My name is Carmelo Crassie, and I am a part of the Rochester for Energy Democracy campaign. I hope you all are enjoying the climate hellscape that we have recently been treated to for the past few days. I bring this up because it is a constant reminder of the urgent action that is needed to curb our dependency on fossil fuels, on fossil fuels on not only a national but a local level. Instead of begging at the feet of RG&E to change their ways or throwing a bunch of money at them to try and incentivize them to stop burning fossil fuels, I propose that the community takes action and creates a public utility. This would allow us to choose the kind of fuel we use to power our lives and give us the policy tools to make sure that the transition and energy in general is accessible to everyone in our community. Having control over our infrastructure in the future will be a matter of life and death, and it is already for those who are homeless or toil outdoors. By turning RG&E into a public utility, the Rochester community can actually have a say in how our public utility is managed. Rochester's interests will never be aligned with those of the multinational corporation that bought out RG&E in 2008. New York City, or sorry, New York State public utilities have preferential access to cheap renewable energy through the New York Power Authority, which was already spoken about. And because of this, there is an even greater incentive to use public power to source clean, cheap, and renewable energy. I stand here today demanding that a budget amendment be put into place so that $500,000 can be put aside to fund a public utility implementation study. This city has a responsibility to help change the course of the climate crisis, and creating a public utility is one of the ways that would actually bring change to this crisis. At the very least, we should fund this study so that we could see if an alternative would work for our community. As you all leave today, I ask you all to just take a really deep breath, when you're outside, of course, and think about what that means to you, and think about how the burning of fossil fuels, the creation of wildfires and other such climate crises can be mitigated by the actions that we take today. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to start, of course, with the forest fire smoke that's been darkening our skies these past days. This has and will continue to have dire consequences for the poorest and hardest-working families in our already struggling communities. Why? Because of climate change, global warming driven by burning of fossil fuels. And while we have, on several other occasions, spoke to you all about the social justice and economic justice reasons to replace RG&E with a public utility, today I want to focus on the fact that RG&E still sources nearly half of our power from the burning of fossil fuels like oil and gas. This is directly causal to the forest fires that we have been breathing the last few days. They are not separate. They are not isolated. It's not Canada's problem. It's ours. By the way, if customer service was the cornerstone of what RG&E did, they'd be working to correct somebody's overbilling situation or erroneous shut-off notice, not here trying to prevent the study. What we're asking for is for our city government to begin to do something, to take some responsibility for the literal end of the world, or at least of all biotic life like you and I. Take that responsibility and that leadership by reserving just half a million dollars to study a green public utility solution, just to study it, for just half a million dollars. That's less than half of what was cut from the PAB in this budget cycle, is studying, solving the RG&E crisis, and by extension, mitigating, again, the literal end of the world, not worth $500,000. A majority of you have told us that you support studying this solution. We thank you very much for those words. We need you now to put our money where your mouths are. We need this study funded. It's just half a million dollars. It's just to study a solution. There really are so few reasons left not to do this. Please stop making excuses and fund the study in this budget cycle. With the remaining few seconds here, I just want to reiterate that the RED campaign and Metro Justice put economic justice and workers' rights front and center. We are not trying to put RG&E workers in this community out of business. We are not trying to change the workforce situation that exists. We are trying to replace corporate management with public management. All right? So unless someone's a CEO of RG&E, their working conditions stand to improve dramatically under our proposal, not be harmed in any way. Thank you very much. Fund the study now.
Carmen Torres. Carmen Torres. Carmen is followed by Chrissy Miller.
Good evening. I'm Carmen Torres. I'm with the Children's Agenda here in Rochester, New York. I am the parent leadership manager. I just want to say hello to everyone. Good smile. So today, I stand before you to address a critical issue that demands our immediate attention: mental health in our community, particularly among our young people. The well-being of our children is not just a concern for our families, but a responsibility that falls upon the community as well as City Council and the School Board. The statistics are alarming, but they shed light on the urgent need to action. In 2021, several pediatric health organizations declared a national emergency for children's mental health. Even before the pandemic, suicide had become the second-leading cause of death for young people ages 10 to 24 in 2018. The impact of the pandemic further exasperated the crisis. With emergency departments' visits, the youth mental health emergencies skyrocketed. Within the Rochester City School District, the number of children in crisis is staggering, and it is our duty to connect them to mental health resources they desperately need. According to the Children's Agenda, that's us, we had a parent poll, and two out of five parents in Rochester alone reported that at least one of their children has struggled with emotional or mental health since returning to school in person due to COVID. Additionally, over 80% of parents identified barriers to accessing mental health services, including issues such as finding and navigating services, affordability, transportation, and long wait times. While the RCSD, and I am excited to say this, has allocated funding to improve mental health resources for students, I am pleased to see that our city budget will also invest in our children's mental health, and I wanted to say thank you for that. The proposed 2023, I see that there's going to be ARPA funds to then contract with the Center for Youth. I see that there's going to be an increased resource for our centers with 33 summer seasonal positions. I see that increased funding for youth employment. I see funding for the person in crisis, for the PIC team. I see funding. I'm excited. So with that said, I want to thank you. Please pass this budget tonight, and also, just to leave you with us, our children matter, right? So an African proverb indicates or tells us: "A child who is not embraced by the village will burn it down." And that's what you're all seeing today. Thank you.
Chrissy Miller is followed by Rachel Crawford.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Miller. I am a parent through the School District, and I am a parent through Children's Agenda. I'm here speaking about mental health. I am pleased, one, that y'all are listening to us parents when it comes down to mental health for our children. I am pleased to see the budget, how you guys doing the budget, for the centers and everything else. But one thing I want to ask to you guys is to add more for special-needs children. Our children are suffering behind that because we don't have a lot of programs out here for our special-needs children, and we need to see more of that. Our parents are suffering behind it because we don't know where to put our children in the summertime to get the help that they need. So my, I just want to say thank you for that, but I just want to see more of that. I want to see more, not just this year, but more down the line, to keep on constantly to help our children with mental health because they need it. We see out here, they are struggling every day of the hour in schools, in the city, all over, and we want to see a lot changed, not just through the City School District, but we want to see a lot changed in the city to make it better for our children. And I really greatly appreciate that, and I just want to see more for our special-needs children, more parks, more everything out here for our special-needs children to make it better for our babies. Thank you so much.
Rachel Crawford. She's followed by Adula Watkins.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I don't have anything prepared, written, but I do want to talk to you as a neighbor, as a small-business owner, and as the mother, most importantly, as the mother of a Rochester City School District child. I would love to come up here and thank you for passing a budget for the increases that were just aforementioned, but I do see some problems, and I do want to address them. First of all, we do need the implementation study in favor of a public utility. There's been enough evidence shown tonight, and I just want to say that I support that fully. There has been a lot that's been increased, and of course, also the police budget. And I'm not sure why that's happening. We continue to increase the police budget and then continue to complain that crime continues to rise, and so we increased it again, and crime continues to rise. And instead of investing in our community and giving people the things that they need, for example, mental health has been brought up many times today, and sure, rec centers as well, taking care of our youth, making sure that there are jobs available. Yeah, I mean, $109 million, and yet the grassroots prevention initiatives, we've got, you know, violence prevention, $5.7 million, and nonviolence crisis intervention, $2.5 million. These are single digits. We've got triple digits in here. I love working with people. I don't like showing up just to protest. I've had wonderful experiences, in particular, working with Dr. Pluso with regard to suspensions in Rochester, which are skyrocketing for our youth, and we know that the school-to-prison pipeline is real. We know that we're criminalizing our children, and overall, we're criminalizing the poor black and brown neighborhoods that my son is in proximity to, particularly the youth. So I really do want this budget amended, and I think that there's a lot that we need to take care of. This isn't enough. I wish that I could be just as enthusiastic and say, "Thank you so much for doing this. Thank you for increasing rec programs," but it's not enough, not compared to what has just been proposed for RPD. Please amend this budget. Please consider what the folks are saying here tonight. Thank you.
Adula Watkins is followed by Marcus Williams.
Thank you. Good evening. All right, so painting a picture here, staging liability. RG&E, oven grid, is ripping off its clients and also ripping off the federal HEAP program and other needs-based programs as such. RG&E mostly does estimated billing with its clients. I was talking with Michelle with Metro Justice yesterday, and she stated most RG&E customers are receiving estimated billing. I'm sure she has the data to support this. Now, how many years has this been going on? Are we too concerned about what we would find? So is RG&E going back to reconcile those, is RG&E going back to reconcile those energy bills? Current? Are they doing it prior to earnings calls or after beefing up profits that are not accurate or based on estimates? Congrats, investors. That sounds like a win. Buy some stock. Red alert: Securities Trade Commission, SEC. In some cases, they never go out, which was my mom up until recently. Other cases, advance payments on perceived future revenue in the form of estimated bill based off of what? How many customers are actually getting an estimated bill on a monthly basis? How often does RG&E go out to reconcile past bills since it is estimated? If RG&E is not doing this often, not at all sparingly, HEAP and other programs, including charities, are being billed for services that have not been rendered, meaning fraud. The most important aspect: they're not going back and reconciling, cutting HEAP, any checks back, or any of these organizations that have been overbilled for the services. But in all honesty, how does that happen? There's no accountability. Federal funds that can be used for other energy needs-based programs are being sucked up in corporate profit right in the front of people's faces. That's simple. Local charities and civic organizations are paying estimated bills for services that are not being rendered, services that could go to help many others in our community. When money is tight, inflation is finally settling down, and adversary at the dinner table taking all our hard-earned money for a few bags of groceries. Example, my mother up until recently has not gotten, has gotten no real bills. They've all been estimated, and I think recently she told me they came out. Therefore, RG&E is not just robbing the clients, they're also robbing the county, the state, the federal government, most importantly, the customers, which is all of us, all of the above. Not funding the study is saying pretty much... Not funding the study is saying pretty much that you're okay with RG&E stealing from the federal, state, local municipalities, civil organizations, and churches. Thank you.
Marcus Williams is followed by Veronica Dashar.
Hello, my name is Marcus C. Williams. I am a resident of the southwest of the city. I've gone to all Rochester City Schools, and I graduated from Wilson. Okay, shout out southwest. All right? But, um, there's some good stuff in this budget tonight. But here's an issue that we definitely have. The crime is out of control, and I know that while this doesn't necessarily have something to do with the budget, it really does have something to do with the budget. We've got everybody in here that's on city council are supposed to be our advocates to the next level of government, that are in charge of passing the laws that are in relation to the crime in our city, which most notably would be bail reform and raise the age laws. Now, people say, "Oh, well, the statistics this, the statistics that." They didn't statistics break into your car and mess your junk up. They didn't statistics shoot your child. They didn't statistics, now your friend is in the hospital, okay, and can't even work their left side of their body, okay? These are real serious crimes that we are dealing with every single day. So my suggestion is this. I have a solution to start integrating the city with, the police with the city, which would be to actually put funding towards little like, um, call them like, police boxes on many of these different empty lots, so that we can actually staff them with a police officer, either one that's going to retire or somebody that's new, just to help process stuff with the community and have some sort of community engagement. We can also use those as hubs to actually add social workers in there to provide some services, and we can put those pretty much anywhere. We can get like the little trailers that you see on construction sites. So it's not a lot. It's something simple. It helps increase community engagement. On another note, I'd also like to talk about the, um, public utility. So two thousand seventeen, I ran for city council. I'm very pro-public utility, okay? RG&E has had a lot of issues as far as their billing and as far as their policies and things like that. Right now, RG&E needs to work on their customer service, actually being able to talk to somebody, actually being able to talk to a supervisor. However, with Metro Justice pushing for this to be a public utility, they want everything under their banner. They want five hundred thousand dollars from you, five hundred thousand dollars from the county, and they don't need it. It's already a business that's already active. You don't need an implementation study for that. You just need to go and you need to get their financial accounting records as well as their human resource records. You don't need all of that, okay? So that's extra money out of our budget that we can be putting in other places, so I disagree with that avidly, okay? Hopefully, RG&E can clean up their act. We'll see what ends up happening. But those, um, digital meters that they're trying to put out there, those digital meters are bad for people. They're bad for the environment. And as we've seen in California and Colorado and other places across the nation, they'll just shut your stuff off whenever they say, "Oh, it's an emergency or something's wrong." We'll shut it off, even if you have people that are in desperate need, like elderly or youth. Thank you.
Veronica Dashar, she's followed by Will Nichols.
Hi, I don't have any remarks prepared today, but I'm, I'm pretty sure I have my message together. My name is Veronica Dashar. I work for Rochester Gas and Electric, and I have done so for the past nine years. Growing up, my parents and my godparents used to refer to RG&E as Reggie, and I'm sure many of you have probably heard us refer to that. But working for the company for the past nine years has taught me a lot. I spent a decade in customer service prior to coming to RG&E, and I can say what you have seen over the past year is unacceptable. We have a lot of work to do, and that work is being done. We've hired over one hundred customer service representatives to clean up a lot of the billing concerns that we've had. As far as estimated bills go, yes, we did stop coming into people's homes to read their meters during COVID, but it was for the safety of our customers as well as for our employees. There's been a lot of talk about funding a feasibility study for taking over the utility. But some of what you have not heard is the fact that Boulder, Colorado tried this over a decade ago. They spent twenty-nine million dollars in taxpayer money, and to no avail. They still have their utility provider. In addition to that, the Long Island Power Authority, which is also regularly cited, they used to be run by LILCO, and when they attempted to do the same thing, or when they did the same thing, they had some of the highest rates in the nation. We've been told today that we burn fossil fuel, and that's the reason why you see dark clouds in the sky or you see smoke in the sky. That couldn't be further from the truth. When the state deregulated many years ago, we were not allowed to have generation assets. We sold them all, and the energy profile in upstate New York is over ninety percent clean between Niagara Falls and the Gannet Nuclear Power Plant. You're being told that five hundred thousand dollars will help to get you a study so that the government can acquire those assets, but what happens when you take over the billions of dollars worth of assets that you're being talked about? That goes on the backs of your city taxpayers. And what we're trying to do is improve the service and the quality of the service that we're providing. I'm a single mother of two kids. This job pays my bills. It's very serious to me what's been going on for the past year. My son is a member of the Black Student Union at his high school, so the spirit of activism is well within our household, but I know this isn't right for the residents of the city of Rochester. I grew up in the city. My mother still lives in the city. It's not right. It's not right to take people who are impoverished and use more money towards something that's going to hurt them. But I understand where everyone is coming from, and I don't view Metro Justice as an adversary. If anything, this is a looking glass moment for us as an organization. So I can tell you, we're going to be out in the community. We're out in the community, and we're going to continue to do more work to help your, our customers, your constituents, and do better and do right by them. Thank you.
Will Nichols is followed by Leela Graham, or Lila Graham?
Hello, everybody. My name's Will Nichols. I'm the Senior Director for Energy Control Centers in New York and RG&E. I've been with RG&E for almost thirty years. I've done lots of jobs in the company, inside and out, but mostly in the Energy Control Center. So I wanted to give you a perspective from an operations point of view for what we do and why I think it's valuable. I've worked to restore power in many storms since nineteen ninety-one. Got here right after the ice storm, whether it be that ice storm, nineteen ninety-eight, we had a Labor Day storm, big winds, stuff like that, that causes our customers to be out of power. I remember when I looked through my career, these waypoints, the major storms, and how we responded. And I'm proud to say that we did our level best to get the customers restored. Today, RG&E continues to have dedicated professionals. We've been through a lot of changes. We've been bought out a couple of times. But that hasn't turned out to be all bad, in my opinion. Back to the ECC. What we do in energy control is we dispatch emergency work. We also switch for emergencies to restore your power when it goes out, but also we, we posture the system to accommodate maintenance and capital improvements, all right? So that takes a lot of work, if you can imagine a hundred-step procedure in order to get a piece of the system out of service so that it can be upgraded. We have operators that perform that, people that check it, and it takes a lot of work to get it done, not only to create a safe area, but to minimize the impact on the customers. So from my perspective, and this is anecdotal, when I look through my career, over the last eight or ten years, I've not seen so much work come through where we're upgrading the system. Now, let me, let me say, there's a lot of work to do. But as an operator, knowing where a lot of the soft spots are in our system, where on a hot summer day, we can't move customer, customers to another circuit, a lot of those have been solved. So, you know, we do a lot of good things. Maybe folks don't get to know that, but in our Energy Control Center, we certainly do. And by the way, some of those capital improvements, some of the work that we accommodate, are clean energy throughout our footprint. Maybe not as much in the city, but if you go east and west where it's a little more rural, you can't drive down a road or go too far without seeing another solar farm and/or rooftop cellar. So the green revolution, the coming of green energy, it's not coming. It's here, and it's ramping up. It's our challenge to try and keep up with that so that we can connect them to our distribution systems and make all that work. So, three minutes is done. Anyways, I don't think there's any company that can help us transition better than the one we have right now. Thank you very much for your time.
Lila Graham is followed by Kim Harriman.
Hi, my name's Lila Rosario Graham, and I've been with RG&E for about a little over fourteen years. I am actually on the front lines every day. I currently work in Energy Services Installation, Department where I assist with new service orders, billing, and collections. I do process move-ins, move-outs. I support supervisor callbacks. I assist in training the new representatives that we hire, and I also process the correspondence that we receive. And currently, I'm eating the appeals department with PSC calls. I work alongside with our, on our pop-up events to provide assistance in the neighborhoods for a one-on-one basis with our customers. I'm also bilingual, Spanish-speaking rep. And last but not least, I am a customer of RG&E just like you guys, and I walk in the same shoes. I take great pride in my job in helping people, I have to say, with sincerity, that RG&E truly does care for their customers. We strive to provide excellent customer service, and we are working diligently to make improvements. When you reach out to us, people like myself see you as an individual and try to best to understand and adapt to your personal needs. We constantly inform our customers of both energy-efficient incentives and assistant programs available to those in need or who qualify. We are real people on the other end, and our goal is to assist those in need to the best of our ability. We do not believe government-controlled power is the best interest of our customers, and funding a feasibility study will waste taxpayer dollars, which can instead be used to further assist the community members in need. And since I have a little bit more time, I just can't say enough for anyone that needs help at any given time. I take this to the heart. We take this to the heart. I assist my people and everyone to me. Like I said, we all walk in the same shoes. I know that we're being, you know, going through a lot of scrutiny and so on and so forth, and yes, we're working really hard in our customer service. Fourteen years ago, you wouldn't see what you see now, and I know it's hard with the bills. We're need, not a want. So I work with my customers. We all do, and anyone that needs help, my name's Lila Graham. I'll be more than happy to call you, email you on a one-on-one basis. I'll do what it takes to assist you and do what I have to do to take care of you in any way I can. But that's all I have to say, and I hope everything works out. Thank you.
Kim Harriman is followed by Wanda Wilson.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kim Harriman. I'm with Avangrid, and we're proud to be a part of the RG&E family. More importantly, I'm a Westsider. My family, my dad, my sister, my brother are all RG&E customers. And so I, I can say with all due honesty that I got a lot of calls when the customer service bills and the billing issues came up. And we had to really look at that. The pandemic created an unfathomable situation where we couldn't go into homes. We couldn't read meters. At the same time, people were changing their usage patterns. They were working from home. They were schooling from home. On top of that, commodity prices skyrocketed, not because of our doing. As you heard, we don't own generation, but that impact came full force all at the same time. And then when we went out to hire people, we faced the Great Resignation. I'm sure all of you have experienced this. Restaurants with shortened hours, businesses that are closing earlier because they didn't have the employees to staff the positions. RG&E is, is in the same boat, and we're coming out of that. I, I can't be prouder of the people that come from the company today to speak, because you can tell they speak from the heart. What I want to do, though, is explain to you my background and what I'm going to give you. I spent twenty years working for the state of New York under four governors on energy policy. I was part of the team that enacted the Clean Energy Climate Goal and formulated the Climate Action Council and the Draft Scoping Plan about how we transitioned the state to a clean energy economy. Last four and a half years of my state service, I worked for the New York Power Authority. So let me give you a couple of facts, and, and, oh, by the way, I was also on the governor's task force to look at the Long Island Power Authority and changes that were desperately needed to that organization. So let me talk first about the New York Power Authority. There's a lot of talk about, "We're going to just get clean energy from the New York Power Authority." There is no more energy left from the New York Power Authority. They're zero. They've already allocated all their available power to existing municipal systems that go decades back. Let's talk about the Long Island Power Authority, and you heard from Veronica. It took thirteen years to implement the Long Island Power Authority from Loco. It cost six point seven billion dollars to purchase that asset. And when I talk about purchase, I'm not talking about actually investing in the system. I'm talking about just buying it. Fifty percent increase in rates automatically. They have the highest rates in the country. So when we talk about it's only going to cost five hundred thousand dollars to do a study, let's get realistic. That study, even if it, whatever outcome it has, we're talking about billions of dollars that it's going to cost to purchase this asset, and we're not even talking about the two point five billion that our company is planning to invest to bring climate action to fruition over the next five years. Thank you.
Wanda Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. Pastor Wanda Wilson here today on behalf of the Police Accountability Board and the Alliance. Here today, very disappointed in what is being proposed for the funding for the Police Accountability Board and the agency. Been on this journey since two thousand and seventeen. This community spoke, and this community spoke loud and clear, and we had a charter change with that. We had legislation with that, that what the community wants is a police accountability board and an agency to oversee for the community, to have a community-led board to oversee the actions of the Rochester Police Department when it comes to police brutality. It is so disappointing to have to stand here today, again, fighting for funding so that the, so that the agency can be sustained. On May first of this year, the interim director came in this room and gave a phenomenal proposal. The community left feeling hopeful, feeling that things were going, that, that council was going to support the agency. Looking, what we're looking at now was what, a one point six, almost a one point six million-dollar cut, and we're watching the RPD's budget explode. I'm so confused how an elected board by the community is not upholding what the community spoke so loud and clear for. Why is it that we have to keep com, coming here to fight, to keep something alive that the community asked for? Not for, some of you, I thank you for supporting us, but some of you do not support the agency, and I get it, but it's not for you to tear down what the community has asked for. In such a strong way, we're getting a charter change in legislation. This agency has been fighting for a long time since there's been a shift in some of these seats up here. This agency, though, and the staff has done a great job. They fought through hiring freezes. They fought through a frozen budget. They're fighting through not getting direct access in order that they can do their jobs. And now today, they're fighting because there has been a proposal not to fully fund the agency, but to cut it by one point six. That is not saying that you support the agency. That's doing the opposite. So I stand before you today hoping that there's going to be an amendment and that you will fully fund the Police Accountability Board and the agency. Thank you.
Walid Mohammed.
How you doing? Good evening. My name is Walid Mohammed. I'm with Metro Justice, and I'm here to advocate for the five hundred thousand dollars budget. for the five hundred thousand dollars budget, to pass the budget. RG&E, I've been a business owner for years. I've dealt with RG&E, their bills, their hikes and the prices never stay the same, or, not in a sense to stay the same, but there's always conflicts with them. And I know a lot of people, a lot of my friends are going through this as well, and families for years and decades. And I think a lot of people have to understand that RG&E and the workers, we're not after them. We're not trying to tell them we're trying to get rid of them. We're trying to get rid of a for-profit organization that works on profit. And the only way they make profit is in a quarterly way. So, if I make five, ten million dollars every quarter, I get to split that with the shareholders, just like you guys had a surplus and you guys got all bonuses, everyone in the city did. So, the same way these people work, and then their process will not help us get to where we need to. In 2020, we had initiatives, and we had, we were watching TV and the news that said by 2024, if this is not implemented, it's too late for our environment and all that. You see the fires in Toronto right now, and Kathy Hochul, our governor, is talking about 2030. I think that's too late. I think we need to stand, and I think you all, you all know what's going on, and the people are hurting. They're taking millions of dollars from people, quarterly, yearly, you know? And you have to look at the county buildings, how much are they charging you guys? Do you even care? You just write the check. So, they're stealing from you too, if they're doing to us. And they just correct it. A lot of people call, what's going on? Correct it. Because they know there's a flaw in their system. It's a casper. And by accepting this and passing this budget, you tell RG&E, they're not playing with us. Okay? They're listening to the people. And I think by, and when you do the implement study, I think you find out that there's a lot of things that are going wrong. These mon- the money we have, we can get from owning that public utility can help the city as well cover their budgets, because it will help the city, it will help, the public utility will help inside the community, and use that money to allocate for programs and, you know, and kind of, you know, expedite things that need to be done. And which, with a for-profit, multi, multi-billion dollar company that works on ninety-five percent debt, and five percent is, you know, they're not, their interest is not for us. They're in Spain, they don't care about us. They don't care about what's going to happen. And so, it's on you to understand. That's your obligation. Thank you.
Pursuant to law, public hearing will now be had on the following matter. Pursuant to law, public hearing will now be had on the following matter: Adoption of Budget Estimates for School Purposes for the 2023-24 Fiscal Year and Appropriation of Sums Set Forth Therein. Introductory Number 256. Any persons designed to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard. Is Eamon Scanlon here? Eamon is followed by Gail Burks.
Good evening, members of City Council, Commissioners and Superintendents. My name is Eamon Scanlon, and I am the Education and Health Policy Director at The Children's Agenda, a nonprofit organization that advocates for evidence-based policy solutions to the most serious challenges and needs of children. We want to commend the RCSD's focus on mental health and would like to see the rollout of telehealth and the expansion of satellite mental health clinics as soon as possible. In the Youth Risk Behavior Survey for 2022, eleven percent of girls at RCSD reported having attempted suicide in the past year. Nineteen percent of all students reported feeling depressed, anxious, afraid, empty or confused because of the death of a close family member or friend. A scientific poll of Rochester Parents commissioned by The Children's Agenda this March showed over eighty percent faced barriers in accessing mental health services for their children. Increasing the availability of mental health supports in schools will break down these barriers, and so, we recommend that RCSD include the necessary funding in this budget to expand the number of schools with mental health, satellite clinics, and add telehealth throughout the district. In the long term, these efforts will be mostly sustained by provider billing of Medicaid and other insurance. Now is the time to enact these changes when the district is flush with revenue. When it comes to school climate, we would also like to commend the district's effort to expand restorative practices and the board's support for the Solutions Not Suspensions Bill, which is a state bill. We are asking that fifteen restorative coaching positions be funded next year, given the deep needs in the community and the difficulty the district has had, oh, and the difficulty, sorry, given the deep needs in the community and the difficulty the district has had in filling positions to spend the stimulus money, it would be appropriate to use some of those funds for stipends to parents and students to be trained on mental health first aid and restorative practices. This is an economic benefit to the community and adds capacity for solving conflict and mental health struggles beyond the classroom. And I would also recommend the city do this as well, if possible. Moving on to the budget book, we have serious concerns, as we have shared before, about the format that was adopted last year and carried over to this budget because of the lack of detail. And we know that that is a process underway to be addressed, but the demands that we have around that are for a longer narrative document created to explain how the policy priorities of the district are reflected in district spending, something five to ten pages long, and a position summary by job code, which should be available to the public, also known as an object summary. And you can see examples of this in the Buffalo and Syracuse budget. Transparency will be crucial going into the twenty-four, twenty-five season, budget season, when some tough decisions will have to be made. For now, we commend many of the positive steps the district is taking to address longstanding student needs. So, thank you.
Gail Burks. Gail is followed by Chrissy Miller.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Before I get started, I didn't know I had three minutes. But, since I am here, can I have everybody just stand up? Because I know you've been working all day, and I want you to hear what I have to say. So, I want you to stand up so we can circulate the stuff in between. I know I got a broken leg and thing. I'm just coming, okay, those who want to, please just scratch a little bit. But I'm here to tell you that I am, I appreciate what is happening with the school board. I appreciate the things that you're making a change with. But I do think I work with the Bi-Pop Peak Office, and we are parent-driven. We take parent experience to the max. We want the parent experience to be incorporated in the R Centers. We want healing circles to come into the school district. We want to be able to make sure that our children not only see professionals that look like us, that's there for us and there for them, but we also want to make sure that they know that their households are involved in what's going on with their mental health. I say to you, you did an excellent job by increasing, but I say to you, don't forget the parents. Don't forget to include them in all of your budget, money, things that you're doing. Don't forget them. They have a lot of pressure on them, but we want to make sure that they are included in all parts of what's happening with their children's mental health. Thank you, and have a great day.
Chrissy Miller is followed by Ira Brunson.
Hello, my name is Chrissy Miller again. I am the parent of the Rochester City School District, and I am an advocate for all the students in the district. I am here not just because I have to be here. I'm here because of a lack of not having enough programs for our special needs children. It is so bad where these children coming out of sixth grade this year only have two choices to pick from. We need more programs for our babies in six-one-two programs. We don't have a lot of those programs in our elementary schools. We need more support for our kids on that level, because we don't have that much support when it comes down to our kids, when our parents are trying to pick schools for our kids. They don't have the support, and they need that support to help the staff, to help the parents to pick the right schools for their children. Because as me, as that mom, I don't, I'm really skeptical of that. I cannot, and I refuse, if my child not where he needs to be in a district, why? Then I feel like I should pull him out and make sure he get the best education as possible somewhere else. So, as me, as that mom, I want to see a lot of things changed in the district. Yes, I understand you have the monies for that. But I want to see more programs set in the district for our special needs children, in the six-one-two program, six-one-four, and et cetera, et cetera, down the line. I want to see that change for this year, most definitely next year, and the years down the line. Because right now, our kids is leaving the district. They are leaving the district because they don't, they feel like they don't have the support. They feel like they do not have the support of staff, and not just the staff, but the district. And we need more support. We truly need more support for our babies. Two, the budget. Greatly, that's great that y'all doing everything that you're supposed to do. I understand that. But as parents, we do not understand the budget. We need to all be at the table as one to understand the budget page by page by page, so we can understand together, not just, you know, separately. But we need to all stand on one page because of our babies. It's not just me, and it's not just all the other students, or whoever else. But, we need to stand on one page. Thank you.
Ira Brunson is followed by Marcus Williams.
Hello, my name is Ira Brunson. I am part of The Children's Agenda, and I work as an EPK teacher in a CBO program. I would like to thank you for extending your work on expanding the summer leap program. I worked for it for two years now, and I see the promises for our children. It's an environment of stability and consistency, and it's needed so much over these hard summer months where parents don't know where to place their children and don't want to decrease their care or learning. That being said, stability is important for everyone. I'm looking through the budget, and I see for our youth and their mental health that a lot of measures are put in place, but they're reactive measures, not proactive measures. And in order for change to truly happen, we need to be proactive. And it's not just our students that are struggling, our teachers are struggling too. How can we have an education system if our teachers are living in droves because they're having students threatening their lives because they don't know how to deal with their life at home? How can we have teachers who care about their job, if their superintendents, if their principals don't support their health or support numbers in the classroom? We need to support everyone here and be proactive and realize what we want to do in the future. That being said, knowledge is power. If we really want to see that change is happening, we need to look back on what changed, what changes we put in place, and if they're working. And we need to see where our efforts are going as parents, educators, and people in the community. So, our budget needs to be transparent. It needs to be understood by all. This is equitable. We are supposed to be equitable. Thank you.
Marcus Williams.
Hello, my name is Marcus C. Williams. Marcus Williams or somebody else, that's not me. But that being said, I wanted to talk about the school budget. Over the years, the school budget has gone up and up and up and up and up. Every year, the school budget goes up. You know what goes down? The enrollment goes down, the number of staff goes down, teachers go down. Everything else goes down. Number of buildings go down. You know what else goes up? Number of schools that the state wants to take over. Okay? But you know what else goes down? The actual proficiency rate of the schools. Okay? When these kids get out of here, out of their high school, they are functionally illiterate. That is unacceptable. It's unacceptable that we keep increasing the budget for the school district, and we keep getting less and less results. That is coming from our tax money as citizens. I think honestly that the city, whatever money that the city itself puts into the schools, shouldn't go to the schools. Let the state fund the schools. Whatever money they get from the state, that's what y'all get, that's about it. Because there are a lot of school districts all across this country that do a lot more with a lot less. We're what, number two, number three, top three in the whole nation of amount of money that we spend per capita, per student? And we're getting what, negative returns? These kids are graduating, they literally cannot read, write, or do basic math. Okay? Where are they supposed to get a job from? Where? We've got all of these businesses locally hiring. We got Kathy Hochul telling us that we need illegal immigrants to fill these jobs. Why? Because our children can't get these jobs because they can't even do math. One plus one is five? Come on. Now, I'm, now I'm over-exaggerating a little bit, but this is not really hyperbole, now is it? And y'all want more and more money every single year. You need less money. You need more fiscal responsibility with the taxpayers' money. I pay taxes on properties that I own, and I don't even have any kids going to school. I don't want to pay you taxes to give you more money to produce more students that don't have any education, that don't know right from wrong, that have no morals, that come out here because they have no other way, because they can't get jobs. So, they out here robbing, shooting, and stealing. Okay? Because they don't have any prospects in life. And this is a real serious issue that really needs to be redressed, addressed. Y'all do not need more money. Y'all need better fiscal responsibility. Almost every year, they're like, we got this missing money, we got ten million dollars missing, we got twenty million dollars missing, we got thirty-three million dollars that we overspent that we never had to begin with. How does that even happen? What is up with the accounting practices? And how come everybody always tells me, oh, the money wasn't stolen? No, that money must have been stolen because it's damn clear missing. Okay? And nobody can ever tell me where the money is going. Where's the money? Where is the money? Because very clearly, it's not impacting our children the way that we need to, because they're not producing the results that we need for them to be actual productive members of our society so that they can add back into the tax coffers later on and actually increase the value in our community. Thank you, guys.
Pursuant to law, public hearing will now be had on the following matter: Levying Taxes for Municipal Purposes for the Fiscal Year commits in July first, 2023, and expiring June thirtieth, 2024. Introductory Number 257. Any persons designed to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard. Pursuant to law, public hearing will now be had on the following matter: Local Improvement Ordnance, Street Cleaning, Street and Sidewalk Snow Removal and Hazardous Sidewalk Repair commence in July first, 2023, and expiring June thirtieth, 2024. Introductory Number 259. Any persons designed to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard. Pursuant to law, public hearing will now be had on the following matter: Confirming the Assessments Amounts and the Charges to Be Inserted Into the Annual Tax Rolls for the Fiscal Year Commencing July first, 2023, and Expiring June thirtieth, 2024. Introductory Number 260. Any persons designed to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard. Marcus C. Williams.
Thank you. So, our assessments are very interesting things. We've got a lot of people that have moved into the city from outside the city that have paid ridiculous amounts and sums for properties inside the city, basically making it more difficult for people to actually buy properties that actually live in the city. So, now we've got a very large majority of the people in the city that are renters, and this is a very serious problem. It's going to end up leading to other tax issues long term. We also have the graying of our population, so that's a whole nother separate issue as far as levying taxes go when it comes to properties and the assessments thereof. Now, my whole concern on the property assessments is that many of them are going up in different areas above what is reasonable traditionally for our city, and that is of concern for me. I would like that definitely to be addressed. And also, I don't want to- And also, I don't want to pay taxes for the city school district. I'm adamantly opposed that my tax funding does not go to the city school district for any tax monies that I put into this government. Okay? They are producing us no desirable, actual productive people to actually add value to our tax money that we're giving. We're getting no return. But, um, back to the assessments themselves. Listen, we can't keep increasing the assessments when crime keeps going up in our neighborhoods. That's a very serious, serious issue. You're pushing people out, you're causing further gentrification when the assessments continue to go up. This is a problem because we know that inflation is already hitting a lot of families and that's another big issue and that's not being addressed either. Traditionally, I live on the southwest where we have had a large number of owners, you know? But over the years, that's gone to a large number of renters and this is a very serious problem. And largely, it's because of the values of the property and those people that are not from the city coming up and buying up all the property. How to address that, I got some thoughts and some solutions, but that's for something else. On a side note, I wasn't, I didn't know that that other one was the one for the road repair and stuff like that, so I didn't sign up for that, but I want to speak on that very briefly with the couple of seconds I got. These potholes are outrageous. Okay? We got the U of R, we got RIT, we got all these other prestigious institutions around here. Somebody smart got to tell y'all that we can actually repair the roads with some new technology instead of tar that they were using back in the dinosaur age. Okay? We really need to update the way that we are actually implementing structural and infrastructure repairs in the city. We got curbs that are all cut up and all tore up. We got sidewalks that you can't walk down, that you can't push your baby stroller down. It is outrageous and out of control. We need to do this in a more efficient manner. I would definitely ask and request that you guys look into other means of filling these potholes and resurfacing these roads because it's out of control, plus it takes forever. Anyway, that's what I got for you guys. Y'all be blessed and be well.
Are there any additional speakers on any of the hearings that we have mentioned earlier?
All right, seeing no additional speakers at this time, the hearings for introductories 255, 256, 257, 259 and 260 are now closed. Thank you to the speakers for sharing your thoughts tonight and to the Board of Education for joining us. These items will be moved to a vote at our June council meeting, which will be held here in chambers on June 20th, 6:30 PM. Have a good evening, everyone.